Alright, so good evening everyone. I'm John Schneider, the chairman of the zoning board and we have all five members present tonight. Although Mr. Tampkin, Mr. Goldman and I will be the ones voting on the matters before us. I'm supposed to tell everyone that you're being recorded and you're also being broadcast live on the cable news, so don't do anything you don't want the world to know. If for some reason we lose our internet and can't get it back, then everything is continued until next month. So with all of that, I think the first order of business is to deal with the minutes of the last meeting. Someone want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of January 20th, 2022.
Second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so the first matter which I'll call is 32 Markley Road. Wes and Lauren Soper owners have appealed the decision of the building inspector dated December 17th, 2021, determining that a proposed addition of garage did not comply with the setback requirements of the zoning bylaw. The subject property is a corner lot located at 32 Markley Road in the single residence B district. We heard this matter on January 20th, continued until today. And the sofas are away on vacation and have requested that we continue until March. So would someone make a motion to continue?
Motion?
A motion to continue the hearing until March 17th?
I'll second the motion, although I thought I made the motion, but I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so the first matter for tonight is 26 Ardmore Road.
Yes, just on that, since I participated in the first hearing, I may not be here at the April hearing, so whatever it is, you need to make sure we have another member.
Yeah, Mr. Legris participated and he may get his chance to vote for the first time in March if you're not here. Alright, so alright. 26 Ardmore Road LLC applicant has applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under section 6.1.2, any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow one additional garage space. The request is associated with the demolition and reconstruction of a new single-family home with an attached garage. Property is located at 26 Ardmore Road in the single residence B district. On this, I presume it's Mr. Janta.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. George Jenta Jr. appearing this evening on behalf of the applicant and has indicated this is an application for the property at 26 Ardmore Road. The property is shown as parcel 34 on Needham Assessor's map 106. It contains approximately 17,622 square feet of area with almost 94 feet of frontage on Ardmore Road. The property currently is occupied by a single-family residential house, a split level with a one-car attached garage underneath. The applicants are planning on demolishing the existing house and replacing it with a new single-family house, which will meet all dimensional and density requirements. That is all allowed as of right and is not technically before the board this evening. However, the, as a part of the new house, the applicants would like to include a third enclosed garage space. Under the bylaw, houses can have two garage spaces by right, but a third garage space requires a special permit. That's regulated under section 6.1.2 of the bylaw and that's why we are here this evening. So is indicated that the house, including this additional garage space, meets all the dimensional and density requirements. Most notably, the front of the house, which contains the garage, is set back over 25 feet from the street, so it meets the 25-foot front yard setback to garage. And I'll point out that the garage, in this case, the all three garage spaces are in the front of the house, but the third bay, the third enclosed space, why we're here this evening, is the frontmost of the spaces. It is really just a garage space. It's a single-story part of the house, so it's a relatively small portion of the house. It doesn't include any space above and it doesn't add any substantial massing or size to the house. Under section 6.1.2, that regulates these additional garage spaces. There are three prime criteria that the board is to evaluate. First off is whether or not the additional garage space would alter the character of the premises. Second, whether or not the additional garage space would have a material adverse effect on the value of structures or property in the neighborhood or amenities. And lastly, whether or not there will be noise, odors, glare at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to neighboring properties. So we believe that these are all easily met in this instance. And primarily, they are all met because the property is zoned for single-family residential use. It will be used for single-family residential use. The addition of one additional enclosed garage space will not alter the single-family use in any material way, any noticeable way, any observable way. So the additional garage space won't have any effect on the character of the property. It won't have any adverse effect on the value of neighboring properties or amenities. And in fact, I would say actually that to the extent that would have an effect on the value of neighboring properties, it likely would have a positive effect in that having the third garage space will, would be expected to have some slight bump in value, which would therefore translate to higher values in the neighborhood generally. And lastly, there isn't expected to be any additional noise, odors, or glare from one additional garage space that you would not already experience with the two existing garage spaces for a single-family home. And in fact, you really wouldn't expect any material or noticeable noise, odors, or glare, you know, as a part of customary single-family residential use in any event. So with all that, we do feel that the criteria in section 6.1.2 are met and that therefore it would be proper to approve the additional garage space. In addition, I'll point out that, as I mentioned at the outset, this lot contains over 17,000 square feet of land. This is a 10,000-square-foot district, so the lot actually contains approximately 176% of the base 10,000-square-foot requirement, nearly, nearly essentially two lots. So adding one additional enclosed garage space certainly makes sense on such an oversized lot. Similarly, it has, as I mentioned, almost 94 feet of frontage, which is almost 14 feet more than the minimum 80 feet that is required. So again, having an additional garage space is consistent with the oversized nature of the lot. And then finally, this isn't the first third-car garage in this area. There is, there was a third-car garage that was approved a couple of doors down at 40 Ardmore in a detached building. Then there was also a third-car garage space that was approved a few years back for 23 Grassmere, really just around the corner from this property. So putting that all together, we would ask that the board approve the application and issue the special permit under section 6.1.2.
Thank you. The planning board had no comment. The building inspector had no problem. The engineering department points out you need to comply with the water disposition requirements when you get a building permit. We did not hear from the police or fire unless Daphne has it. I don't have it. I don't think we heard from them. I can't imagine they have an issue. And the health department just points out they, you know, need, want you to deal with pest control during the demolition. So anyone on the board have a question?
I just, you know, it seems appropriate, George, you highlighted that it's an oversized lot and that it would seem to fit in very nicely. Just tell us about the glare of the lights. Is all the lights from the garage pointing down not to disturb the neighbors?
So I'll just mention that, you know, it's the lighting on the garage would be your standard garage lighting, just like any other single-family residential house. But beyond that, I'll ask Gene Volusion to comment on that. He's here this evening. Who's the developer, builder, the live body, if you will, behind the, behind the application.
Yes, definitely. Thanks, George. And we're definitely planning on installing the light that will be pointing down. It is something that we do pay attention to because we've, we've ran into situations, not the garage related, but sometimes you may have a floodlight that may be pointing in a direction of a neighbor, and so I understand how a neighbor may feel. So we always make sure that the lights are pointing down and are contained on the property.
Thanks, Jilly.
Stephanie, is there anyone from the public who wants to be heard on this? You're muted.
We have one, we have two raised hands, so I will go ahead and promote them. This is the Talley Shuster Row. Has been promoted. Alright, looks like it's gone through.
See your name.
Alright. Yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you please give us your address?
Sure. So we live at 25 Ardmore, literally across the streets from 26 Ardmore. So my question is very general. Are the three garage spaces going to reside on the same side? Or are they going to be on the opposite side of the property?
So the, the three garage spaces are all located in the front of the building, in the front of the new house, but they actually face the side. So if I may, I can share my screen and sort of show where that is. Let's see. Alright, so if you can see this here, right, is the front Ardmore Road. And this is, this is the three garages here. And they face this way.
Okay, thank you. So driving out, it's going to point basically to the side and not toward Ardmore, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
George, can you share the rendering?
Sure. I certainly can. Okay, so this is the front, if you're looking at it from Ardmore on the front. Alright, this is the garage section here. And you can see a little bit here, this is the one-story third garage bay. And then this is the two garage pieces there. This is the, from the right side, so this is where you actually see the garage doors. You know, from the right side, if you came into the property, you're looking at it from the right sideline. The rear, you don't see it at all. And the left side, this is the additional garage space here. And then the two sort of as-of-right spaces are in here.
That's nice. Fits nicely.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Is that a brick material, that the brown, it was just a different color to emphasize something?
It's wood.
It's what?
It is wood. It's stained wood.
But okay, got it. No, it's very nice. It fits in nicely. It's sort of contoured.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's another, a couple of more hands raised, so I'm going to promote them. One is Haji Perry Higia. And I'm going to promote them as panelists.
Hi, I'm located at 34 Ardmore and my name is Higene Perry. And so basically looking at similar question related to the facing of the garage. So as you see that beautiful side where the garage doors are all facing and all the windows that faces directly onto our house and all the lights and the lighting related to that. Or just wanted to kind of highlight the concern of all of those lightings and elements like that. That's one, one question or one thing I had to raise. The second one was just related to, as you see in the lot picture, that the first one that Mr. Ginta had displayed, you could see that there's a gradient on the side of the, the land towards the other, the other house land. And I guess I wanted to just acknowledge the fact that that is a pretty steep grade and that my concerns are about actually how they will take care of that grade as well as the very large trees that are along that line and the, the size of the house and how it will plan, fit. You say that it will fit within the zoning regulations of the sides of both plot lines, but my concern is that the gradient on that other side is also not taken into consideration and therefore will that push the house in retrospect closer to our line, to our side as well? And will those actually be, actually be, what's the word, actually followed, I guess, you know?
Well, first, first of all, our, if we approve this, it'll be conditioned upon the, the fact that there could be no light glare that goes to adjacent properties. Secondly, the building inspector won't allow them to build this property unless it complies with the setback. But I'll let them try to respond to your question about the grade.
Yeah, sure. So, so you know, what you've seen on the plan is, is what's, what's to be built. So that takes into account grading that needs to be done to, to basically make the house fit on the lot. And it's actually, dealing with grading is a relatively common straightforward kind of thing that, you know, that I know Gene has dealt with multiple times, that pretty much every builder has to deal with from time to time. So from, from sort of the, our side of the table, it's, it's not a particular issue. We can't, the, the house is sort of set where it is. It can't really get much closer on the left side. And it really can't get a whole lot closer on the right side either. So pretty much, you know, where you see it, this, this house is designed to fit exactly into this envelope. So you don't have to worry about it moving during construction, for example. You know, all of a sudden shifting over five feet because of the slope on the other side. It's already sort of taken into account that slope.
I, I think, I think maybe the issue that my wife is trying to highlight, like the way you, the way you presented the size of the lot and how this will fit beautifully and it's not an over, it's such a large lot, it's not an oversized house. I think sort of misrepresents what the lot actually looks like. And I think we do have a concern that, that, that this, this house will not actually, you know, fit nicely and with the look of our neighborhood and with, with, with the appropriately sized homes throughout the neighborhood that fit with the size of plot, but also the gradient of plot. And then beyond the fact that I suppose, you know, I think we are, you know, I, I, I'm not a zoning expert by any means, but I assume there are these rules you need to apply for variance for a reason that we have these rules for, to protect the existing homeowners. So the fact that don't worry, there won't be a glare. Like, how do we arbitrate if, if in, at the end of the day, there are three garages and we think there's a glare? How do we define?
That you don't, that there won't be a glare, especially if that's one of the rules on why?
Well, let me, let me try to answer it.
Okay.
First of all, this is not a variance. It's a special permit, which is a hugely different matter. Special permits are all the time in much lesser standard in the bylaw. If there is glare that you object to, you'll go to the building inspector and the building inspector will come out and make them change what's going on in the property so that there's no glare. And thirdly, I just want to point out that we're not here discussing the size of the house or the location of the house. If we were to deny the request, they'd build exactly the same structure. The third bay could not be a garage. It would have to be solid. But we're not here discussing or dealing with the size of the house or the location of the house. The only issue that's before us is whether they can make that front section a garage or it has to be storage.
So you're saying that front piece will be there no matter what? So you're saying that it's either that third piece is going to be a storage piece or a garage piece? And no matter what, the amount of lights that you'll have on that side will remain the same, no matter the approval or not? Is that correct?
Yes. If we were to deny this permit, they could build this whole structure of right. It's just that they can't have a third garage door.
Okay.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question to Mr. Janta and to the developer. The architectural plans appear to denote that there's going to be three separate doors, but the rendering appears to have a double door and a single door. I'm guessing the rendering is more accurate, Mr. Janta and Mr. Volotion?
I'll defer to Gene on that one.
Correct.
Yep. So I think it's important to point out that there's only going to be two doors. So we're just talking about an oversized door and a more narrow door. So the number of lights that could even potentially be there would be the same whether there would be two single doors or a double door and a single door. Correct, Mr. Volotion?
Correct.
Yep. Is the vegetation still along the property line between 26 and 34 as well?
It, it's, it's there now. And, and I'm, I'm sure that Gene will, will preserve as much of that as he can to keep a vegetated buffer over there.
Super.
Is there someone else who wanted to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there's one, Nina Campaign. I'm going to promote her as a panelist.
Good evening. My name's, I'm not Nina. My name is Jeff. I promise. My name is Jeffrey Allen. I'm an attorney with the firm Lawson &amp; Whiteson. And I represent Nina Payne and Robert Payne, who live at 20 Ardmore Road, who share the property line with this property. Share the property line that, where the garage is going. And I'm here to express some concerns they have and some issues they have. First of all, I, I take your word for it, Mr. Chairman, that the density wouldn't change if this wasn't a garage, but, but storage, but I'm not, I'm not 100% convinced of that. But assuming that anyways, although Mr. Jenter has said the slope will, and grading will be dealt with, we don't know how it's going to be dealt with. And we also don't know what the plan is for vegetation and screening along the property line. There's a lot of screening there now. I would suggest, and I, I've done a lot of land use and I understand the difference between a special permit and a variance. And I would suggest that this is in your discretion. And I think it's premature to approve this where they're asking for a relief, special permit relief, without some understanding of how they're going to deal with the grading. Are we talking about a retaining wall along the property line? Are we talking about grading? And also without a landscape plan? So that the buffer that's there now remains there or is at least replaced when the construction ends. And so on behalf of the director butters, we have, if you look at the, the elevation they showed, you're along the property line. My clients are going to be looking for, at a solid wall with, with, you know, windows. And are concerned about what buff, landscape buffer they're going to have, whether that buffer is going to have to be four, five, six feet above because of a retaining wall or how it's being handled. If it's going to be graded down and then there's a fence, if the fence is stats at a different height than, than the grading, it's of no constant, it's of no benefit in terms of protection.
What was your, what was your clients like in terms of screening?
Well, first, I think that before we can deal with screening, we need to know how they're going to deal with grading. I think the great, where the screening starts is, is, is critical to determine what effect of grading is. I think we would like a landscape buffer. We'd like to see a land. What we would like to see is a grading plan, proposal, and a landscape plan. And I don't think, under a special permit, in fact, in some municipalities, that's a standard condition on a special permit, but we would like to see a grading and landscape plan before you vote this. And I think it's a direct butter. That is not an unreasonable request.
Mr. Volusion, do you want to comment? Or Mr. Janta?
George?
So I'll start by saying with all due respect, when it comes to special permits for third-car garages and similar single-family residential, typically, there has not been a full grading plan or landscaping plan. Unlike commercial development or multifamily development, even in multifamily development with two families, there is not customarily a grading plan or a full landscaping plan. That said, you know, it certainly is reasonable to discuss buffer, vegetative buffer or other buffer along the property line or, or other screening. But I think to require a full landscaping plan and a full grading plan is a bit of overkill for a project like this. Especially considering that the nature of this special permit, as previously indicated, is really in some ways essentially just the, whether or not to permit a, a third garage, well, in this case, a second garage door. It has nothing to do with really the, the structure itself or the grading on the lot or any of the other, the other components. It's really the question of whether or not having the additional garage is proper. So with respect to some of these other issues, they, they don't, they aren't particularly germane to the particular special permit and therefore they would be overkill. Now that said, I don't know if Gene wants to discuss his plans for the landscaping on that side or, or for the, for the grading, but but, but I think, you know, a discussion is appropriate, but having a full plan is not.
Well, I, I would simply say, and with all due respect, rather than discussion, we'd like to see a plan so it could be a condition to the special permit so that we know what the discussion is, it's going to become reality. And it is a solid wall on our property line, 14 feet off our property line. And one of the conditions of a special permit is value, effect on value. And I think screening is critical to the value of 20, 20-odd more, which is my client's property. So I think it would make sense for everybody and it'd be in your client's best interest that we do this at this stage of the proceedings. And, and so I don't see what the problem is continuing in one month. And, and, and you give us a landscaping plan and a grading plan that we can, we can engage in a dialogue, even, may not be customary, but in this case, I think it's right. And we can engage in a dialogue and maybe a month from now, we won't even be here because of the dialogue and, and what you give us. But I think it makes more sense to do it at this stage of the proceedings than later. I, I, I'm surprised frankly with the director butter that it wasn't done before this tonight. I, I learned in land, in land use, it's always better to reach out to your butters than wait for them to reach out to you. But some believe in letting a sleeping dog lie.
So my, my perspective is I'm not going to impose a landscape plan or a grading plan. I'd like to hear from the developer what he's talking about. It is a third-car garage. My recommendation is that be permitted as a bright in town meeting and allow it and not waste our time with special permits on the thing. But that has never been taken up by town meeting, so I'm, I'm not inclined to require it. I'm absolutely willing and want to hear from the developer of what he's planning. And, and if, if you, sir and George, are interested in putting this off for, for a month and providing some type of planning, plans for the butter to look at, I have no problem with that either.
Like, Gene, are you prepared to maybe have a discussion?
Sure. I think that, so I would like to start that, with that. We've, we've done a lot of work around Needham and Willie live in Needham as well. So my wife and I, we own the company and we take a lot of pride in projects that we do. And if you, if anyone has seen our projects around town, you will tell that, you can tell that we're not, you know, skimming on details and doing the minimum. So the, the same cases with this project, we would do very extensive planting to make sure that there is privacy on both sides, which is something that we typically do. Regardless whether we had the third-car garage or not. I'm a little bit concerned, Mr. Allen, to talk about this right now because as everyone already mentioned, the ask for a third-car garage, and I don't know the legal terminology, but there is nothing here that has to do with the landscaping. So I'm a little bit concerned about signing up for certain landscaping tasks that I wouldn't even have that conversation about if I muted that third-car garage. But I would, but, but as I said, I think that to make this project look good, there is going to be some planting going on on the left and on the right side. there is going to be some planting going on on the left and on the right side. Currently, what you see on the left side is a mound that separates us from Nina's property. The purpose of this mound, and it's nothing more than that, is absolutely nothing. Other than other than geographically, it separates us. If you look at her elevation with their their family elevation of the property, and you look at the property that we're trying to develop, there's probably at most a foot to foot and a half difference in elevation. So you have two properties identical, and there is a mound between them. On top of that mound, there is a fence which belongs to your client. That fence currently is installed on our property. According to our surveyor, there is a significant violation. It is in the beginning at the street, it is six feet on our property. Later on, that fence changes from vinyl fence to chain link fence. At the chain link fence, that eh eh at at the start of the chain link fence, that fence is located in the right position. After, as it continues closer to the end of the property, that fence, um that fence is in in the correct location. So there is a problem on the left side already. Uh, in addition to that, what separates two properties right now is, I would say, about a dozen of mature pine trees that don't have significant growth at the bottom. And it's mostly long pines that have very small crowns at the top. They present a danger. And and regardless of which house we're going to be building, by right, we will be removing those trees because they are, they present a danger. They present a danger to structure, future structure, and uh from usability standpoint, but also from safety standpoint, in case of a wind. Many roots of the of this of those trees are actually spreading on our property because it's less, it's less dense. And many roots are at the surface level. Um, even as we're going to be digging foundation, potentially, we're going to be touching those roots. So I think that, having said that, if I did not come before you to ask for a third car garage, I would still be removing those trees. I would still be communicating with Nina about the fence. And I would try to come up with a mutual mutually beneficial landscaping plan that separates both of us and makes both of our properties look better. Thank you.
I'm I'm a little surprised because having done this for over forty years, we usually communicate before a public hearing. So what if you're gonna, eh I'm more concerned now than I was when we started, now that we've heard that you're removing a dozen trees. And I think that's all the more reason to request a landscaping plan. It should, it's not, I don't think it's a big ask. Easily, a landscaping plan can be done in a week to two weeks. And can be done by the time we have the next board meeting and see what's going to replace those dozen trees. And we can certainly look at your survey, and if the fence is in the wrong place, we can correct that. This that this is the very first, I think Nina or anybody's heard of that. So uh that that's not a problem, but simply ask, if you're gonna take out a dozen trees, uh it's significant, and the third garage does impact that because of the back of increasing the wall on the property line. We're we're seeing, we're seeing the backside of your house uh on our property line, and it's elongated by the third garage, and that affects the value. Now, if it's properly screened, it minimizes the effect on value. So I think it's directly relevant to the grant of a special permit. And this and and the special permit is there to protect the neighbors. So I'm not saying no that we're gonna oppose a special permit. I'm not saying any of that, but what I'd like to do, I think my my experience has said that it's much easier to resolve these disputes at the at the Board of Appeals level than later on. And I'm simply asking for eh 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 landscaping plan about the dozen trees you're gonna remu- remove and communicate how we're gonna handle the the property line and come back in a month. I know, I'm I'm not sure that's a big ask.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Please.
So so from my perspective, the removal of the trees has nothing to do with the fundamental special permit being requested, the third car garage. To the extent that there's an allegation of it of extending the wall, as you could see on the plans, the third car garage is not, uh does not extend the wall in a solid line, but it rather is a essentially a bump out, if you will, in the front. So it doesn't, i- it provides shadowing and architectural distinctions that isn't the equivalent of extending a solid wall to create like a forty-foot-long solid, you know, sort of brick. Uh, it's different than that. So I have to say, number one, with respect to the allegation that it's gonna be an impact of value because it because the the overall house is slightly longer than it would otherwise be, uh I I think it is a bit disingenuous. I think, you know, this is, the the likelihood of that having any effect on value is is im- uh an impossibility. And and you know, we can, we can agree to disagree on that, but uh but it certainly, that's certainly been my experience and and my impression. Uh, I would also like liken the 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 request for a landscaping plan to to going into McDonald's and asking for a drawing that shows where all of the sesame seeds are going to be located on a bun. You know, uh when I'm asking for a sandwich, it's a, it is overkill in the extreme for a project like this. When such a plan is irrelevant to the nature of the actual permit being requested, is not required uh in connection with the construction of the house itself, which is really what the the objection appears to be here. Uh, counsel has mentioned about the 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 wall and the size of the house. Well, that's a separate issue from the garage. The garage is really a minor and inconsequential piece compared to wh- what appears to be the real issue. The removal of vegetation, again, that's inconsequential to the to the special permit for the garage. The grading, again, inconsequential, because these are all things that are tied to the actual house itself. If you do a percentage, the size of the of the garage compared to the floor area or even the footprint of the garage is minuscule. So to say that all that just having an additional garage bay, and I'll stretch it further, and I'll say really an additional garage door, because that's really what's at stake. Uh, that that somehow triggers the need for a in fully involved landscaping plan and grading plan is is just absurd to me. And and it's it's the sort of thing that invites further debate and further discussion and further involvement and further fees and time that quite frankly is is not appropriate for uh for this sort of an application.
Well, with all due respect, it's it's unfortunate that you think further discussion with your butter is an impediment. There's a reason this is a special permit. It's to become before a public body for public discussion, and the butters, as you know, uh Nina and her husband have presumptive standing here. And to say that an impact on value is impossible um is 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 not an appropriate statement. This is a public hearing. Abuddies have a right to be heard. She's a direct butter. She and her husband are direct about us. And we don't want a full landscaping plan. We're not asking for a full landscaping plan. We're not asking for a full grading plan. We're asking for a landscaping plan and grading p- plan on our common lot line. We're a direct abutter, and it's unfortunate that eh maybe, maybe um maybe it's different in Needham. I haven't had a lot of experience in Needham, and I know you have. But it's unfortunate that you think discussion within the butter i- is not inappropriate course of action uh on it when you're asking for a special permit. You're not building as of right here. You're building us with a special permit. For some reason, the the wisdom of the town meeting of Needham has made this special permit. And we're not here to oppose your special permit. We're asking for thirty days and asking you to show us how you're gonna handle the common lot line. If that's inappropriate, then I'm not sure why we have zoning. To have a discussion with your buddies is never inappropriate.
Well, I agree with you on that, and I'm not saying discussion isn't warranted. What I'm saying is for construction, where the construction of the house is not what is a part of the special permit. It is simply the garage door that is really the focus of the special permit.
I would suggest to you, it's your interest and our interest to have this discussion now rather than have it later in a more regimented form forum. We're 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 sending you an olive branch. We're asking for thirty days, not and eh eh and we wanna support you. We don't wanna oppose you. We're simply asking you to show us how you intend to handle the lot line. We haven't seen that.
I don't, may I speak for a sec?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't, I'm not against um working with Nina on the on the plan and how to handle the left side. I I am against that it's attached to the third car garage decision because as George stated, this is about the door, so I don't see how it related to the screening. I think that the whole screening conversation is much more detailed. It's not a subject of this hearing. And I think it's a conversation that the neighbor and I can have in a more informal setting. I don't think there is a need to escalate it to this level. Because as I mentioned, there is a, there is, there is a um mound between us that looks does not look good for either parties at this point, even on their finished site, there is nothing pretty about it.
Not disputing you. So we're just asking, we're asking you to show us what, I'm not saying you're wrong, and I'm not saying this can't be easily dealt with. But what I'm saying to you as a developer, as someone who represents a lot of developers, I promise you, it's a lot easier to do here than it is in another process, and it just makes sense. We don't want to oppose you.
Mr. Allen, but it just feels like it it's it's that is being tied to a forum that that has nothing to do with the with the landscape. So I feel like a little bit being intimidated here that uh, you know, you're extending an olive branch where all we're doing is we're doing everything by right.
Well, you're not doing it by right. If you were doing it by rights, or you wouldn't be here tonight.
Can we move on, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think we're, I I think I think we, is there anyone else who wants to be heard?
Oh, well, I I just want to comment a little bit, so that
Well, why don't we wait and see if there's any other comments?
Okay. There are no hands raised.
All right, go ahead.
So in the seven-five-two-one of the special permit, you know, I'm want to take the position somewhere in the middle here that that it's supposed to be designed in a manner that's compatible with the existing natural features of 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 the site. And I know, George, you're saying that this is a garage. It could be built anyway, and I agree with that. But I I think that the council ha- has raised some concern, and frankly, you know, Gene has talked about taking some some trees down. So I I I do think it's fair to have the discussion. The concern about discussions without plans is is they can go nowhere and can't be, you know, tied to a special permit. I do believe that there is a request, it's a public hearing for, you know, plans. Uh, eh eh and I think it's a request in in the narrow area. And, you know, Gene, you're you're showing uh 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 willingness to to participate. You agree that it needs to be altered. Uh, there's a mound, there's some confusion in my mind with that mound. Looks like it, sounds like it may be moved. And, you know, I I think there's enough basis under seven-five-two-one about being compatible with the existing natural features to to warrant some type of plan, a limited plan. And I agree, they shouldn't have to spend for massive plan. Uh, it's limited to one area. Uh, and on the, and I'm, eh eh you know, the retention wall, I get I have that been out there, but it sounds like there's some grading differences. I I haven't been out there, but that's what they, what I'm hearing. So I don't think it's unreasonable to try to put a plan together in this limited area that would 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 both meet the objections, eh you know, or concerns of the neighbor as well as Gene's desire to work together to to make it look good. And I think that's truly, I think the interest will overlap significantly. I don't really see much um eh eh opposition i- if the plan is is thoughtful and truly is trying to create some screening uh for the the new garage, perhaps the lighting. But, you know, it sounds like it's a little awkward in that 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 tho- those areas that are being discussed.
Mr. Tamkin, you have?
Yeah, I I totally support their discussion. I have no problem with the thirty-day continuance. Uh, I'm not going to require the applicant to submit a plan as part of this special permit. I think the applicant can simply withdraw the application, build their house, and come back some other time and ask for the garage door. I appreciate that the builder is here to have this dialogue with the abudders, to have this discussion, and that that they don't build a house and come in afterwards. I've expressed that that is not an acceptable procedure, although they're permitted to do that. So I I I appreciate what the builder is doing. Uh, it is a dialogue, and I always will uh will vote to support a continuation for thirty days. If they get together and they want something on paper and the developer doesn't want to spend any time or money developing something on that side, that's his choice. I'm not gonna require it. Uh, and then I'll vote my conscience of whether I think this third car garage bay should be approved, and I do. Uh, I don't have any problems with the application of that. So that said, it's always better to get along with your abudders and your neighbors and have a dialogue. You've heard the innuendo several times that this is a better form to do it than somewhere down the road, so you know where that's going. Um, so my my suggestion is you consider pushing this off for thirty days. You decide what you want to do, Mr. Jenta. Come in with a plan. Don't come with a plan. Have a discussion. Show what you're gonna do. We can incorporate into a decision whatever you want to propose. You're gonna take down six trees. You're gonna plant nine trees. You're gonna build a fence. You're gonna, whatever you want to do, we can do. Uh, uh, if you want to prepare a plan on that side, feel free. Then 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 it, yeah, obviously, we have something to tie it to, but I I don't think it's necessary for this type of application.
All right, um, Mr. Legris, who, have any comment?
Um, I, my only comment here again goes to the fact that we're talking about one extra garage door. Keep looking at the plans, and I understand the abudders. I understand the abudders' concerns. You know, clearly, the grades right now are a little different. Um, I think that the notion of staring at a wall might not be entirely accurate, because like Mr. Jenta said, we're only talking about that front portion, which is the lowest height anyways, and based on the grade, that'll probably be the least visible, but um, I'm not voting tonight, so maybe I'll vote next month. But I, like Mr. Tamkin, am inclined to think that, you know, this version of the special permit process for an extra garage door is, you know, something that might be a, might be better suited to be adjusted down the road by a town meeting.
Mr. Vreidenberg?
I I I really think we've beaten this to death. I agree with what John said. I I I just think that the point is lost that this building can be built as a matter of right. And and we're so far beyond the third car garage. Uh, so I I I don't want to prolong the conversation tonight.
All right. So, Mr. Jenta, do you want us to vote, or do you want to continue this for thirty days and have a discussion with your neighbor?
So we'll um, we'll be willing to continue it for thirty days to have a discussion and see where that goes and then come back.
All right.
Could I, could I have the name of the attorney, please, representing?
Jeffrey Allen, J E F F R E Y A L L E N.
Thank you.
All right, someone want to move to continue this, please?
Uh, move to continue this hearing until the next meeting, which is March seventeenth?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward. Her third and final case is four seventy-three High Rock Street. Janet Carter Bernardo, owner, applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under section one point four point six. And then the other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow a lawful, pre-existing, non-conforming building be altered, enlarged, or reconstructed. This request is associated with the demolition and reconstruction of an existing detached single garage with a new detached single garage. Properties located at four seventy-three High Rock Street in the single residence B district. Take it. Mrs. Bernardo is here to speak on this.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janet Bernardo, and I am the owner of single-family home at four seventy-three High Rock Street. I've lived here since two thousand and fourteen, and the house was built in nineteen fourteen. Um, it's my understanding that the garage was also built in nineteen fourteen and basically consists of chicken wire and stucco. Um, it's my understanding that the garage was also built in nineteen fourteen and basically consists of chicken wire and stucco. Um, the garage is detached from the house and at the moment it is about point eight feet away from the. Side property line. It's also less than ten feet from the house. It's a seven point six feet from the house. Um, I would like to basically build the same size. It's only a single car garage, twelve feet by twenty-two feet. Um, take down the existing garage and put up, um, a new garage that maybe is built with something more than chicken wire. And, um. As suggested by the building inspector. I can pivot the garage so it's parallel to the property line, about three feet away. Um, to, to push it five feet away and ten feet away from the house. Puts it more into the backyard and, um, it just takes up more of the yard. It's not that large of a property. And I have a lot of gardens and I have a subsurface infiltration system to handle my roof front off that is. Um, in the back of the house as well. So I kind, I really wanted to put it. Back in the same spot, but, um, I'm happy to just make it parallel to the property line and have it three feet away. So. I'm looking for relief from, um, section one point four point six. For the, um, setbacks from the property line and the house.
Thank you. So the planning board had no comment. The, the building inspector. I, I guess was hoping you could comply with the ten feet away, but you've explained why you don't feel that you wanna do that. And I guess I, I understand your reasoning. See, the, uh. Fire department has no issues. You know, the health department points out that you have to get a demolition permit and deal with pest control. The engineering department is, has no objection. Um, nor does the fire department. Uh, there any members of the public here who wanna be heard? Definitely.
We have one raised hand. I'll promote Mark Jacobs. As a panelist. Mark Jacobs has been promoted. Mark, please unmute.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I, I don't have video. Um, I hope that's, uh, okay. So I have, um, one comment, one question. And then, uh, and then just, uh, I'll, I'll say whether I, uh, have any objections or not. My one comment is that looking over the, uh, the plans. Uh, I find a lot of small discrepancies in all of the plot plans between. The, um, surveyor and, uh, what the town provides. And so I'm just curious as to why there's so much inaccuracy. Uh, in, in these things, when we're talking about like just three feet. Uh, from the property line, but the property lines don't seem to be all that well, uh, defined. Um, so that's my one comment. My one question is if, um. If the variance is allowed, does it preclude, uh, any construction on my side that might. Uh, be i- in the future that might be close to that property line? Does it change the, the. The setback requirements that I might be or a future owner might be faced with?
Okay, well, fir- first of all, again, this is not a variance. This is a special permit to reconstruct the non-conforming building. But apart from that technical matter, whatever we do on this property has no effect whatsoever on what you can do in the future on your property.
Okay. And then with regard to my comment on the, the inconsistencies in the surveys. Can anyone address that?
Well, I guess I don't understand, we have a plot plan here that's been prepared by a surveyor. And what is it inconsistent with?
With the, the, the property lines from the, the town, from the deeds.
I, I, I don't, I don't understand. Is there, do you have a plan? Of this, uh, plan, a record?
The town, what the town provides. So if you look through the material that, uh, was submitted. There is different dimensions for frontage. There's different dimensions, uh, for the square footage of the lot. And between a, a plan that I got from the building department, there's a different, slightly different direction of the, the property line.
Well, I, 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 I do know that the assessor's drawings are not done with. Any kind of precision. Um, presumably the, this, this was done, the plot plan was done by a registered engineer. And I'd be inclined to think that that's the more accurate, but. I mean, it's, 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 it's not unusual to get discrepancies. But my presumption is, is that the plan done by the surveyor who would have gone out there on the ground is the more accurate.
So.
But, but in, in, in any event, I, I don't see how that issue affects. Whether you're, you have a problem with this.
Well, I, I, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanna be clear, uh, on what might happen if in the future. Another survey says the line is, uh, slightly different from where it's showing now. So if it goes from three feet to two feet, or it goes from three feet to five feet, you know, what, what is the impact in the future?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know, uh. I mean, there, there's the stat, there is a statute of something is built pursuant to a building permit and. And a time period goes by, then it, th- the town can take no zoning enforcement action and actually becomes. Non-conforming, but, uh, I mean, I, I, I. I don't know that we can really speculate. I mean, it, it, it will be built in accordance with. What the surveyor has indicated are the lot lines and if later it turns out to be two feet. You know, the, the, if he's made a wrong lot line, then the owner will have a problem and the surveyor will have a problem. But, I mean, we gotta proceed, proceed on the assumption that the plan presented to us by registered surveyor is accurate.
Okay, thank you. So.
Mister. Mister Jacobs, could I have your address?
Four sixty-one High Rock, next door.
Thank you.
So I, I would just add that. That, uh, I have no objection to the.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The plot, to the plan.
Okay, does anyone on the board have a question?
Yeah, well, I did a comment really that, uh, I think the applicant's saying that she'll. Uh, is, is, is mindful of what the building inspector has requested, which is moving the garage. A, a little bit of weight. I think you said that you would, uh, make it parallel to that lot line. Uh, with a three foot setback, and I think that's appropriate. I think to make it, move it away from the line is appropriate. And I would like that to be part of the, the application as, as an amendment to it, uh, but a- otherwise I'm supportive of this.
Are you going to plan to submit a revised plan showing that?
Look, I, I, I think we can write a decision that just describes, it'll be moved parallel.
No, I, I, I realize that. I'm just asking, are you revising the plan to show that, that change?
I thought I did provide you with a plan that shows that change.
Okay, good.
It's two plans, it's an existing conditions plan and then there's a proposed plot.
Oh yes, I see that now.
There's two plot, two proposed plot plans.
The one dated January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
So you've already addressed that, accepted it, and incorporated into your proposal, so it's there.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Uh, sure. Move that the applicant's request for a special permit under section one four six. Uh, of the bylaw to allow a lawful pre-existing non-conforming building. Uh, to be altered, enlarged, reconstructed. And that the, this request associated with the demolition and reconstruction of an existing detached single car garage with a. Uh, new detached single car garage be approved. Uh, but that this be, uh, that the plan that was reflected in January of two thousand twenty-two. Showing the garage, uh, parallel to the side lot line with a three foot setback, uh, be part of this application.
Second that, Mister Tamkin.
Can you just repeat what plan were you assigning to Howard?
Well, well, curious, I, I, for some reason, I don't have a more recent January two thousand twenty-two plan, but there's discussion that. There's a plan in a package.
It is.
I, I have it, okay.
Uh, but, but it's that plan, uh, dated January, uh, two thousand twenty-two.
And it's the, it's, uh, January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two.
That, that's the applicable plan with this application. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, um, so, um, it will take us three or four weeks to write up a decision. Um, and you'll deal with the building inspector. Uh, to get a building permit when you're ready to go. You probably, probably don't wanna do it now in the middle of snow, any.
I, I have to find a contractor. Turns out there's a lot of pieces to this garage building. But thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Alright, so, uh, Howard, will you write this decision, please?
Sure, sure. For some reason, uh, I, 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 maybe I'm only looking at the materials that were delivered. I don't have some of these plans that reference like this brand new plan. But if I go online, Daphne, that would be in the attachment.
I will send it to you. I will absolutely send it to you. It's also on the electronic version that I sent to, to all the members. There's an electronic.
Should I, I, I'll be honest with you, I just have, looking at the, the written materials that were submitted, I did not look at the online plans.
I will send it to you, since you will be the author of.
Author.
I will make sure that you get all the plans.
Yeah, well, whatever it is, it was in my package. You ought to just check again, Howard, and let Daphne know.
But I, I'll make sure you get it, Howard.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's actually handwritten in. You can see the blue pen in the January twenty-seven, twenty-two, so I got mine too, Daphne.
Yeah, read, read the name, John. Read, read the name on the stamp.
Say that again, please?
Read the name on the stamp.
Well, again, put my glasses on.
Whose name is it, Peter? You can see it better than.
Mister Bernardo.
Though the name on the survey is not me. I am not a land surveyor, so there was a land surveyor. And I'm a professional civil engineer.
No, you're entitled to stamp the plan, I understand.
I don't just stand the. But I did not do the survey, so there was, therefore you have two plans, existing conditions stamped by the surveyor. And a proposed conditions stamped by the civil engineer.
I didn't know. Kinda handy to have one of those around, uh.
Every now and then it comes in handy.
Alright, is there anything else we need to do tonight?
Would you accept the motion to adjourn?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you all.
Alright, good night, everybody.